All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Monday, June 17, 2024. It's 10:03 a.m. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Claus, and Commissioner Carolina Mejia on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. We have staff and a whole bunch of folks in the audience. Public virtual attendance is available on Thurston County YouTube Channel. We're here for two hours to cover the topics, and first up is employee recognition.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. We had something pretty amazing happen. Jeff, our Treasurer, up to the table. It's involving an employee named Deanna Doherty.
Deanna Doherty, yeah.
Yeah. Jeff, I'd like you to tell the story. We have a certificate for her, but why don't you just please start?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm County Treasurer Jeff Gadman, and had something a little bit amazing happen in my office last week. I was not in the office at the moment, but Suzette Smith, one of my accountants, was eating her usual morning snack of some almonds, and one went down wrong, and she began to choke and could not breathe. And Raquel Carpenter, also one of my accountants, started to call 911, but Deanna Doherty, one of my accountants, immediately went into action and just instinctively did the Heimlich maneuver, and it took four tries, but she saved a life. And it gives me goosebumps every time I tell this story, but I think it's pretty incredible, and I think Deanna needs to be recognized.
And so Chair, although the Commissioners signed something, Deanna's on, I think, well-deserved vacation this week, right?
Yes.
Couldn't make it here, but would like to give this to you, Chair, so you can present this to Jeff. You've received that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for sharing that. You know, it just shows you how incredible our staff is, and I'm proud of them.
Wonderful. Okay, and the next item is our courthouse campus infrastructure project update. And why don't you go and introduce yourselves, gentlemen?
I'm Rick Thomas. I'm the manager of our projects capital planning team.
Thomas Trumke, Capital Projects Manager. Wonderful. And Team, if we can bring up the presentation? Do you need to share our screen? Let's go to the Zoom. Share screen. Share. Go to the slideshow. There, I can't see. Can't see. If it was a woman behind me, I could have saw there. Chairs, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank all the stakeholders, our judges, prosecuting attorney, looking at, we have a couple department heads here. I want to thank them for their time and investment in this process. Today, we look to review background information, discuss impacts on the current renovation project, where we're at, review election timelines. Those were some requests that came from the last briefing, view potential properties for new courthouse, and discuss next steps and staff recommendations. We have the next slide. As we get started, what I wanted to just highlight is that there have been several former studies that have provided options that need to be researched and reviewed in depth. I included an attachment to one of those studies. It's just one sheet with many documentation, and for Commissioners who have been here a while, probably know well more than I do that there are several different perspectives and different approaches that have been presented in the past. The presentation we plan to review is a combination of two former presentations, one that was given leading up to the item being put on the ballot before the pandemic, and the one that dates back, we were thinking maybe 2015, 2016, and Rick is familiar with both of those. The reason we combined two presentations is because we wanted the Commissioners who asked for an overview, we wanted Rick to go through some of the various options that have been discussed, and the goal is to provide an overview for various discussions and points, but in no way is this presentation exhaustive or definitive. As I've been touching base with stakeholders, they've been sending me different reports and studies that the county has paid for. Rick is also sending me some information, so we're all getting up to speed on this, and it's information that we can share with any of the new Commissioners that would like to discuss that offline. And go to the next slide. At this point, I'm going to hand over to Rick, who's going to walk us through, and we want this to be interactive, so Commissioners, if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask and interrupt, and Rick, I'll put you in driver's seat now.
Thank you. We are going to go through these slides rather quickly. There's 50-plus slides. Some have more information, some have less, and I want to make sure that we do have time for questions as we go through. So Tom, go ahead and click through a couple of slides. Go ahead to the next one, if you would. So what the slide shows is the existing properties that the county owns on the hilltop. The one addition that we have to this from the original slide deck that we did in 19, I'm sorry, in 2018, 2018 and 19, is the addition of Building 7. So Building 7 now allows us to own that entire block that has buildings 4, 6, and 7 on them. So just a little bit of background on this. Buildings 1 through 7 in the past have had all of our justice and many of our county services included. The reason for looking at the new courthouse again back in 2018, and as County Manager indicated, there's other studies that go back to 2014 and even before that, but some of the reasons are that citizens do visit these sites to serve on juries, to make payments, apply for permits, passports, register to vote, just visit with the county officials, and other different types of county-related business. So a very busy place. Go to the next one, Tom. Again, this Building 1 is vacant right now as a part of the project that we have to do renovation, and most, if not all, of the different functions that were in Building 1 are actually now in the atrium, where we presently are at. Building 2 and Building 3, primarily the courthouse buildings, and they do have standing right now in Building 2. In addition to the Superior Court, we have the clerk's office and the prosecuting attorney's office, or at least part of their office. In Building 3, we have the district court, and then we have the sheriff. So again, that's the, that's the status of the buildings as they exist right now. On the next slide, we have Building 4, Building 5. Building 4, again, is vacant, and, but those different groups have come over to the atrium as well, being vacated for the renovation project that is on the plate right now. Building 5 has the prosecuting attorney civil group, and Building 6 has the public defense at this point. Building 7 isn't listed here. It's one of the recent buildings that has been purchased by the county, and part of that space is being used for the public defense group as well. Go ahead to the next slide there, Tom. Just a couple of different issues that were a part of us going to this new courthouse as an option had to do with the difficulty of wayfinding within the seven buildings that we have on the campus. There wasn't a real clear direction a lot of times in regards to where the entry was into different facilities, and particularly when you got to Buildings 2 and 3, a very limited amount of queuing space to come through the security. Go to the next one. It shows a couple of pictures in regards to those corridors and just the pathway findings. You'll see that there are very narrow corridors there. Departments were located behind closed doors off of the public counter, so again, kind of hard to find. There wasn't a real central information area, and so we had long lines and some efficiency issues with staff just because they're constantly directing folks to show them where offices were, and I mean, I can attest to that being in that building as well. It's, it's, the space, buildings are a bit hard to access. The parking is limited, often full. The jurors have to walk up to a quarter of a mile. The wheelchair access is not good in some places in the building, and then the multiple buildings really make it hard to find out exactly which part of the county you're going to go visit. So that's really, again, part of the existing courthouse complex itself. We're going to take a look now at some of the needs. So so the first need has to do with just primarily security in the buildings. As mentioned before, very tight areas making security challenging. You can see that when we have the larger jury trials and that sort of thing, a lot of times there's long lines coming in and out of the courthouse buildings in particular, and only two of the seven buildings actually have security screening stations on them. The next slide has specifically to do with the courthouse itself. There is a hallway that's behind the courtrooms and in front of the judges' chambers and jury area, and the way that this building, again, built in the 1970s, was set up, which was real typical of courthouses in that day, was that the defendants would literally be brought into the courtrooms by going through a secure space that was behind the courtrooms, but that's the same areas that the judicial staff, judges, and all others basically needed to use to get to the end of their courtrooms. And so it does definitely pose some sort of a threat and a risk in that particular area. So there are certainly new guidelines that we'll kind of go over a little bit later in the presentation in regards to what a modern courthouse looks like. So the, this next slide here shows Building 3. Again, just the tight spaces. There's really no room for circulation, and as you can see from this, the public basically exit by going behind where the personal, security personnel are. Building 2, it's a really small vestibule area, and again, you can see from the photo there that the way that they're actually separated, public going in and out is just from some stanchions that are there. So some security risks associated with that. And next slide is going to talk a little bit about the buildings themselves. Again, the buildings were constructed in the late 1970s, and they've had kind of the routine maintenance done on them over time. However, when you get to a building that's, you know, 40-plus years old, there are systems that just simply, they wear out and they, they break, and that costs significant funding in order to replace those kinds of systems. So again, these are just some photographs to give some idea of the HVAC systems that have met their useful life. We have roofs that have leaked substantially over the past. We've patched and kept watering out the best we can, but roofs need to be replaced. The buildings don't meet the most current earthquake safety codes, and again, when these buildings were built, there weren't computers actually sitting on people's desks, and so infrastructure in the building is a bit outdated for IT-type situations.
Yeah, and Rick, I would just add that, I would say, well, this morning, I think a few judges walked into a bit of a water leak with ceiling tiles on the floor, and when you say that the building doesn't, is a bit out of date, I would say it's way out of date from a technology standpoint. Underneath, in the courtrooms, I had the privilege of having a tour with, with a few folks last week, but there's a ton of wire management issues because the building wasn't situated for cameras and computers and scanners and everything else that comes with operating in a modern age. And so the furniture is being, is being retrofitted. There's old systems still hanging, and just a lot of, a lot of challenges there.
The building was built when and was intended to last how long?
The buildings were constructed in the late 1970s. They are wood-framed with a brick veneer on them, flat roofs. I mean, I would call it basically a Class B construction, and those typically last 25 years to maybe 30 years at the most, and then a developer would typically look at completely renovating it from top to bottom, or honestly demoing it and building something new.
And they're like 45 years?
Correct.
Thanks, Rick. Please carry on.
So the, the next slide gives a little indication of the maintenance on the buildings. There was a report completed back in 2000, I believe it was 15, and the consultant responded and put together a list of many, many deficiencies in the building that needed to have corrective action taken in order for our buildings to really be functioning the way that they should for the long haul, and, and that was about $50 million. Further conversations with the consultant really also brought to light that the types of repairs that we were talking about, the $50 million would really extend the building life maybe 10 years. So it wasn't, that wasn't even enough money to do a major upgrade to bring all the buildings back up to a complete restoration. The current buildings are not all that energy efficient and are a bit expensive to operate. I don't want to get into all the details necessarily, but you see a little bar graph on the right-hand side there. This was something that we wanted to show when we went out to the different groups back in the 2018, 19 time period, just to show that the county was putting money into the buildings to renovate them and keep them up to date as much as we could with the funding that's available. So I guess, I mean, what I'll basically just say is if you look at this kind of on an average, and this was only through 2019, you know, on average, we were spending over a million, close to probably a million and a half dollars a year to keep the buildings going. And just to kind of give a little bit of a comparison, the amount of building revenue funding that we have to keep that came in from our rates was about $1.7 million a year. So the amount of funding that we had come in was about the same amount that we were actually putting back into the buildings to keep the most critical parts functioning. I think the next one, we've actually gone through, Tom, so we can skip that one to the next one. We've touched on these before, but again, this is just kind of a, gives a photographic picture of the systems that are in the building, roofs needing replacement, HVAC systems that are outdated, electrical that's past its useful life, technology you can see over there. We actually have some areas where we've had to do repairs on soffits and other types of materials as well. So, and then I, I'll mention the next slide. This is an actual incident that we had in 2018 where we had one of the main feeders into the courthouse complex that literally broke, and the county courthouses were down for a couple of days until we could get temporary work done on that. This says that, that the entire system needed to be replaced, and in fact, they did replace it, so this is no longer an issue. We do have power that is updated, but that took, again, several million dollars to be able to get that back in place. So jumping ahead, yeah, thank you, Tom, kind of jumping onto the next scenario here. As part of our site selection process back in 2017, we took a look at about a dozen different locations where we could potentially have a new courthouse, and just some of the restraints and constraints that we had for it. By state law, the courthouse has to be within the city limits of Olympia. As we looked at different options, some of the items that we took into account was the acreage, the amount of space that we would need, roads and transit access, utility services, space for parking, risk from an earthquake, sea level rise, all those issues were considered as we looked at these different, different options. We had a, a public community group that was a part of this entire study as well, and we had several open houses, met with neighborhood groups, had quite an outreach for about a year with several of the folks that are in our audience today as well. And they gave input in regards to the different sites, and ultimately, there were three sites that were selected to look at in more detail. And again, I don't know if it's worth going into that in a whole lot of detail other than to say that there was one site that was looked at on the west side. There was a downtown site that was looked at where the, the old city hall for Olympia was at, and then we looked at the hilltop as the third option, as being the three most probable. So next slide there, Tom. The next slide, we just wanted to kind of show more history in regards to Thurston County. So this goes back to the infancy of, of the county and the progression of different buildings that county services have been in. And so you can see back in the late 1800s, in the building that I believe SBI and some others from the state now occupy. So that building's been around for 140 years now. Looks really nice and made out of native material. The early 1900s, we had grown out of that particular building as a county and moved into a different facility, and they were there for 25 years. Early 30s, moved into the space where the state now owns in the early 30s, and were there for almost 50 years. And then in the late 70s, we moved into the hilltop where we've been for about 40-plus years. But basically, what I really wanted to point out from this is that the previous courthouses were constructed out of very sustainable types of materials. They were meant to last for, I mean, literally 50 to 100 years, and they all have, and are continuing to be used. And then you have the comparison of that versus the existing courthouses that, again, made out of veneer-type brick and I would say low-end commercial construction with, with wood.
Go back to using Tenino sandstone for all our future buildings. That's what I'm hearing.
My wife's great-grandfather built steps on the Capitol with those, so yeah. The, the next item, again, just gives kind of a diagram of the population growth over the years, and this is just really to point out that when the courthouse complex up on the hilltop was built, there was under 150,000 people, close to about 120,000 people in the entire county. If you look to the, about 2020 to 2024, 46 years later, we had more than doubled in size as a county, and if you project it out about another 30 years into 2050-ish timeframe, again, we had about another 150,000 folks, so pretty much tripled over time. So that was, again, one of the reasons to have the possibility of the new courthouse. So the next slide, it's titled "Out of Space," and this was really, again, just to show that we have the crowded areas within the buildings. Lack of space sometimes caused the courthouse operations to be delayed or not start on time, and I'll just say, one of the scenarios in the existing courthouses that's a real problem is the attorney space to meet with their clients. A lot of times, they're just right out in the public areas, and it just doesn't make it very conducive. and it just doesn't make it very conducive for having good conversations with, with their clients.
Rick, if I could add that, not only is the facility, the structure itself aged, but the finishes within, well, the furniture, fixtures and finishes within the building, they all are dated. And so when we look at the courtrooms and the daisies, the jury seats, I know there's been some attempt at enhancements and changes. We look at the, the benches a juror sit on, all of that, the whole package is very, very aged and, and needs to, something needs to be done there.
A few of the other challenges that we have, again, the departments have just simply outgrown their square footage needs. And just say, if you walk the district court, for example, literally had folks that have taken storage rooms that are now offices. So there, there just is not a lot of space to do the work that they need to do. I think we've covered everything else there. So just for the sake of time, I, I think we'll go ahead and move on to the slides here. Pass that one Tom. So I want to take a little bit of time to talk about what the needs are that need to be addressed. So, the next slide, thank you. So security improvements, the, one of the goals of the new courthouse project was to have a single point of entry that would be screened and secure, both for the courthouse and for the administrative functions of the county. It would provide proper circulation for the public and the judges, the jury, witnesses, so that you had proper separation between in custody, the public, and then judicial themselves. Secure parking for the jurors. We also wanted to really improve some of the accessibility issues that we have being up on the hilltop. Not a lot of amenities around in regards to place to go for lunch, just to get away from sometimes the stressfulness of being in the court. It's not the most easy place to get to, even from a public transportation perspective. And then if you are driving, there's a bit of lack of, of parking up there as well. So we won't dwell on this next one a whole lot, but again, just from a history perspective, we did work with the consultant to put together, I'm just going to say, a high-level sketch of what a building might look like if it were to be constructed on the city of Olympia property where the old city hall is at.
Just say, for the commissioners that are new to the discussion, can you talk a little bit about how the county got to a point where it was considering a new courthouse? I think you've alluded to it, but if you could just speak specifically to that.
Sure. So we, we had a study done in two thousand fourteen that basically helped us to determine what the actual space requirements would be for the courthouse and court functions most specifically. That was followed up. In two thousand seventeen, we started with another feasibility study with the consultant to determine if we could expand that to be more than just the courts, but would also include the, again, the government functions as well. That led to a scenario of getting a community group together to work with our consultant team, so that we could have avenues to go out to the community in order to present what the problem was. And basically, it was kind of the slide deck that I'm going through now. So we met with, again, a lot of neighborhood groups. We met with a lot of different civic organizations, all of the city councils from the cities within Thurston County, in order to be able to share the details of what the need was and what the possible solution would be. With that, there was a resolution by the board that we would go to a ballot measure in April of twenty twenty. And that was all set in place. And literally, before that could happen, we all know what happened in April of twenty twenty. And so that got, that got put on hold at that point. So that's the, the basic history to, to how the project got to where it was. What we determined from our space programming with, again, the courts as well as the other government entities, is that we would need a total amount of three hundred and thirty thousand square feet of space. And it would be divided kind of in half. I think there was just a little bit more court space than there was administrative space. But it would be in the context of a courthouse facility with a public lobby area. And then there would be another building that would be more the administrative part of the building, again, which would be similar to what we're seeing here with the atrium group. And then there would have been a separate parking structure on the site in order to be able to handle the majority of the parking. So, again, we, this was put together as the, I'd say, preferred option of the board at that time. There was no design work done, other than just making sure that we could show what a building might look like that would have three hundred and thirty thousand square feet in it.
Rick, do you have a dollar amount that was projected?
Yes, Commissioner. The dollar amount for that particular project was, I believe, was about two hundred and fifty million dollars. And that would have been if we would have started our design process in two thousand one and finished the construction in two thousand twenty-five. So that was about a four-year time period for us to do the work.
I think the Plum, which was the one that was selected, was two hundred and eighty.
Oh, I think, Commissioner, I believe you are correct.
I think West Side was two fifty, Plum was two eighty, and Hilltop was like three twenty.
I believe you are correct on that.
Before, and that was prior to the changes we've had recently in that.
That's right. Yes, that is correct. And I should probably add, I don't know how much it adds for the conversation, but we are also in a, in a partnership with the city of Olympia, where they would have been sharing about eight or ten percent of the building for their own court functions with us. So it's really a partnership between the two groups.
Do you know the dollar amount or percentage of inflation that we've had since that original figure?
We've done a little bit of analysis on that, and it's, it's between thirty and thirty-five percent. So, very significant.
Yeah.
So a few features of the new courthouse, the design, we would have had more court space, would have been more energy efficient, and we would have used sustainable design for kind of our materials. So hopefully, we could build a building that would have been similar to those buildings that were built in the early nineteen hundreds for court spaces. And from an operations perspective, we, we had a goal of making it kind of a one-stop customer service area. So wayfinding would be a lot easier. You definitely knew you're coming to the courthouse and the county seat of government. And when you came in, everyone would come through the same entry, and then the wayfinding would be very easily determined once you got into the space. From a safety and security perspective, what was, what was shown as just a suggestion of a good floor layout for the courts would be to have, and I know this is very small to see, but again, you'd have the common securities agreement coming into the courthouse in the administrative building. But then you would have separation of the jurors, the judges, and the witnesses from the defendants. You'll have an increased safety for the public and staff and reduces risk of mistrials. Also, we'd have more space for the attorney-client to be able to meet. And again, I won't go into a ton of detail on this, but with the modern courthouse, which this floor plan shows, the back of the house is called the secured area. That's where the judicial staff would be, judges and everyone. No one can get to that space without going through kind of a secondary mode of, of security. Detainees would actually be brought up from elevators or in elevators directly to secure spaces that are between two courtrooms, and then go to the courtrooms from that space, and then back down to the Sallyport area where they would be held until the next time they were called in. That would keep any direct contact between the in custody totally differentiated from the public and from the jury and any of the judicial work that was going on there. And then the public would be able to basically come into the courtrooms through the main public opening, but there will not, again, be that crossing of public with defendants or with the judicial staff. So that's really what a modern courthouse should be. And with the design, again, back in the late nine or late seventies, there just, there just literally isn't any way to fully comply with that kind of setup within courthouses these The new courthouse would have allowed us more parking. Again, if it would have been downtown, it would have just been easier access for everyone. The next slide, we'll talk about, just real quickly, there was always a question about, okay, how's it going to get paid for? The plan was for this to be paid for through property tax. And the numbers are, again, are a little outdated here, but based upon, at that point in two thousand eighteen, a median priced home of three hundred thousand dollars in Thurston County, it would have been about a twelve-dollar-a-month increase to property tax in order to be able to fund the initiative. I think we'll skip that one, Tom. We've already gone through that one. Next one is partnership opportunities between the county and city. And again, I just briefly touched on this, but the city of Olympia would have been able to do some of their court trials within the building and potentially have some shared spaces that could have been used that would have been efficient for all different groups. The next slide, again, this is just a proposed rendering that was done by our consultant to show what the building would look like and the whole landscape of kind of the downtown area there. And as, again, as Commissioner Mensah indicated, this is the one that's off, right off of Plum Street and very adjacent to Union. And so it's very visible as you come off of the freeway. This shows where the administrative building could be, where the courthouse could be. You can see the passenger drop-off and also the main entry into the building with the security between the two, and then the parking structure off to the right. So, again, these were just conceptual. There was no design work done. It was just to make sure that when we went out to the public, we could kind of visually show them kind of what the magnitude of a project like this would look like. So you can go ahead and skip on past that. One more, Tom. Yeah, thanks. So this is, again, this is just a rendering of potentially what the lobby entry would look like going into the courthouse. So you'd have the courthouse maybe on the left, and the administrative features could be on the right. So anyone coming into the facility would have a really good idea in regards to wayfinding and where they need to go to do their business. Go back to the next one, Tom. So again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but one of the studies that was done in two thousand fourteen, fifteen showed what an efficient floor plan would look like for a courthouse. And in this particular case, based upon the projection of number of courtrooms and judges' chambers, it was proposed that maybe a six-court-per-floor scenario would work with three floors of court spaces. The next slide shows what it looks like if you were to kind of do a section and elevation through it. And so, and again, this is just a hypothetical, that you could have the superior courtroom on top two floors and have basically twelve courtrooms and judges' chambers off to the side with the other functions associated with that. District court could be on the second floor there, and that would give them six courtrooms with associated judges' chambers. And then the administrative part of the courts would be on the first floor. So, again, no design work done on this. This was just programmed to show that a building like this could give you the immediate needs that you needed as well as expansion space into the future. Tom, the next one there. So the next one shows, again, some of the options that were brought up in that study, the two thousand fifteen, sixteen study. One of them was looking at the hilltop. And so you can see that that shows the courthouse with the parking structure that's on the block that we now own, that's buildings four, six, and seven. So basically, just kind of kitty-corner to where the, the other ones are at. One of the other options that they looked at was what they called urban block consolidation. And this wasn't, this was, again, generic. It wasn't telling you even if there was space available, but if you were to do something in the urban blocks, again, this size of a project would take up probably three city blocks to do that. The next one was looking at what they called an urban block infill. And this was where you maybe not, would probably not have as big a footprint of a block. And so you had to take more blocks in order to be able to fit all the different spaces on it. And in this particular case, I believe there were three or four courthouse-type buildings, and then a couple of parking structures in order to give enough space. Another of the options that was looked at was called the urban campus, and that was to find some space where you could build this on a larger block of property that was probably about ten acres by itself. Again, there were no, in this particular study, there were not any actual sites that were named, but it was, if you can find something, this would fit. And then the last one was a suburban campus. And I think this was more kind of taking a look at, you know, if there was something out on the west side where there was ten to fifteen acres, it would give you an opportunity to build motorized buildings, but you'd have to spread them out a little bit farther. Now, the comparison cost, again, I'm, this just comes straight out of the report, so please take that with a grain of salt, because times have changed tremendously. But I won't read through them all, but you can see the difference in cost from a, you know, two thousand fifteen perspective to two thousand eighteen. These are high-level, high-level, you know, referred to magnitude costs that you'd probably, to, to have any safety factor, you'd want to put some additional contingency onto that. But that just, it just shows you that you're, you know, in the hundred and forty million dollar range in two thousand eighteen. And again, this was primarily to cover just the courts and not the administrative part of the government services.
Rick, if I could, on, on this slide, Commissioners, simply because it was a discussion point, not because that's a recommendation from staff, but the question was if there, if the, if the current remodel project was delayed, what would be the impacts? And the question specifically was, it was delayed to the November election. So the team put together some numbers that Brett put through.
So this, what we have up here are just impacts if we, if there's a decision made to go to the November twenty-four ballot and have our project not go into the construction phase. We will, we will have expended about seven million dollars of the fifty million dollar bond. And that's just, that's for the design and all the soft costs that goes into getting to the place that we are. There would be about a four- or five-month delay in the construction start. If, if this were to go to the ballot and then not pass, we have been talking with our design, construction team. You know, again, all construction activities would stop until January of two thousand twenty-five. At that point, they would go ahead and start going out to their subcontractors to get pricing so that we could get a guaranteed maximum price together. The escalation for that four-to-five-month time period is between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. It's about sixty thousand dollars a month at a minimum. But the commodities, there's a lot of them that are going up and down, and it's not always very consistent. One thing to also really consider on this is, we all understand that there's a fifty million One thing to also really consider on this is we all understand that there's a fifty million dollar cap in regards to the funding we would have for that project. And so the escalation that we would lose up to that five hundred thousand dollars, we would have to go back to the design that we have on the table right now and reduce about five hundred thousand dollars worth of cost out of the construction contract. And probably even more than that because it would cost between two and three hundred thousand dollars for us to have our design group go back and then redesign the project to meet the reduced scope. And then we do have the project into the city of Olympia for permitting right now. And there would very likely be additional cost for us to resubmit some of the permits based upon a redesign. And so there, there would be additional costs associated with that.
Can you talk a little bit about the seven million, this first bullet point?
Sure. What we've done so far. So we are, well, I'll tell you what, I'm actually going to let Tom do that since she's been working with the design team and can explain that probably better than I can.
So you approved the first section of that was the one point five to get to a, to understand what the design program was, a basis of design. And after that, we came back to you and asked for additional funding. So it incorporated, taking that basis of design and getting construction documents. So most of it's spent on design with the construction firm confirmation of the pricing. So we always were in the fifty million dollar budget. It also includes soft costs like our salaries, a design build consultant to make sure we're following the state guidelines on design build. That's pretty much it. And part of that is state tax because on a progressive design build project, you have to pay the state taxes on that.
So Tom, we've spent seven million to date?
We haven't spent total seven million to date, but we're projecting out, we're keeping the design going so we can get to permitting. So that takes us through August is current spend and projected spend of up to seven million.
So if we work together, we could give the commission a two date number when we go back to our desk and take a look.
Yes.
Questions? Did you want me to go through the next slide?
Yeah, so we can get the next slide. Commissioners, you asked about timelines for potential election dates and appreciate Amy Davis putting that together for us all to take a look at the next slide. Also, just had the team do a rough, very, very rough. And they said, Leonard, this is very rough, so we're stressing very rough. Just a rough look at what's available out there right now, you know, from five to ten acre sites. If the desire is to look at going back to new courthouse, which I, I believe the desire is always, we need to look for a new courthouse facility, just a matter of timing and the remodel. And because of the situation where we're, we're in motion on this remodel, staff have been working very diligently, there's timelines and thresholds. But obviously from the last conversation, there's a sensitivity about that fifty million dollars and what it gets us in a facility that I think Rick adequately described as very challenging. It has old bones and what we're getting for the fifty million dollars isn't a, isn't a complete turnkey with all systems replaced. It's, it's a space increase. And while there are significant space increases as we, as they laid out last time, we're still left with a facility that may have challenges and will continue to have challenges going forward. So withholding that intention with looking at what are the other options and the potential other viable options, then the next slide.
It says one, two, three, four, six, was there a five?
There is a five.
Go back one slide.
Yeah, it's, it's way out on the far side of the right page. It's, it's a site off of Martin Way.
It's hidden behind.
It's hidden behind there.
Oh, I apologize that that didn't show up.
It's on the screen, it's hidden behind the zoom.
It's just behind the zoom. Oh, okay.
Move that down. The, the site that we had originally selected, when the Squawson Island Tribe were here, they mentioned that they had some discussion with the city of Olympia about a project. Is that site off the books or?
I'm trying to get confirmation from the city. I have a call into them, but I haven't got confirmation on that yet.
Those conversations I had with Chris Peters when we met for coffee, it looked like it was off the books, so.
Which is the Plum Street site that you're referring to, correct?
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, I don't know where one, two and three exactly are, but I can tell you, having attended many of the open houses, there was tremendous community opposition to a west side location. And that was really clear from the open houses, so. Because you're basically creating like alternate downtown site, you're like, it's bad urban planning, bad. You know, I mean, it's like creating a whole other urban hub on the west side, which is not what the people on the west side envision their sort of community to be and a whole bunch of other things.
Now Olympia is completely re-envisioning the west side, it seems like, with that whole Capitol Mall discussion. This is very rough without.
I don't remember all the ins and outs, I just remember that was a very clear takeaway at that time.
All this, all I wanted them to do is to look at, is there anything available for five to ten acres? Because we understand that, that that available footprint is tough to come by.
Are all the sites that you're talking about here, they're within the city limits of Olympia, right?
Yeah.
So back in two thousand and four, I think that's about the timeframe. We attempted to make a move over to Tumwater because of the close proximity. The court heard that case and we couldn't do it. So even this location, there is some question on whether or not this is a legal location because it was an annexation. I would propose that if, if we're going to think about doing something other than continuing down the path that Rick is working on now with that fifty million that we seem to realize that that's not adequate to do the job. I would like to see us ask the attorney general for a written opinion if where we are today, which is a annexed area outside of the original city limits of whenever eighteen hundreds, and make sure that we're okay to be here. And could we be in other annexed areas of the municipal location here? Now, we did get a written opinion from the prosecutor's office within the last year or so that says we're okay here. The problem is, we had something similar to that back in two thousand and four when the Tumwater, because of proximity, was looked at and the court turned it down. So we have a local prosecutor's opinion saying, hey, we're okay here, we think we're okay. That doesn't carry the same weight as the state attorney general saying, yeah. Based on that court opinion, we now are going to restate the position that we had. And I think that position was from, I don't know, nineteen eighties. I think Ikenberry maybe was the attorney general when that ruling came out that we could not be outside the original city limits. So I, I just think it's a very simple question to ask the attorney general. So there is absolutely no doubt, we'll know yea or nay. And that'll be one less thing to be a detractor if something moves forward. And because timing is of the essence, if we submitted that question tomorrow, probably wouldn't be soon enough.
So we'll go to the next slide here and staff recommendation is that we pause the remodel project for thirty days. Assign two commissioners to a committee tasked with working with the county manager and stakeholders on determining potential options for moving forward. Like I said, a lot of great studies and options that were provided. I believe that those have been looked at, but it may be a good time to look at those again and come back. Back to the full board in thirty days with findings, that process, working with the stakeholders to get their opinions. Chair back to you.
Okay. Discussion on this proposal. I would not be able to serve on that, just FYI, if we're talking about the next thirty days. With the board recess, I'm out of the town for a good chunk of it in Bulgaria.
I'm, I'm available, I'd be interested. I, I, I'm all for pausing. I think, you know, I've, I've been vocal about my concerns about spending fifty million dollars on something that's only going to last us five to ten years. And I, I just, I, I don't, I don't see it getting us where we need to be because we need to think bigger and, and make real, real plans that are going to last us for forty, fifty years, not five to ten years. And those buildings up there are never going to be adequate. Even, you know, they just, the way they built them in the seventies doesn't work, but the way they built them in nineteen oh five does.
Yeah, it's pretty.
It is what it is, yeah, yeah. So I, you know, I, I, I wasn't part of the discussions prior, you know, to the first of the year. And, you know, I know there was a lot that went down on how we got here and, you know, I, I, I respect that. But, you know, I have real concerns about throwing kind of good money after bad money, you know, and kind of in a sense.
Should we be here, I know you had, you were, you were the one that raised the topic of the ballot and what do you think about this?
I think it's a, it's a good idea to pause as well. I think it gives everyone kind of the time needed, we'll be in recess. I am also available. And since I was here before the decisions, you know, kind of, you know, prior to this year, I'm, I'm more than happy to volunteer as well.
I guess my question would be, with five commissioners, we're kind of limited on, on that committee assignment, which would be, you know, we don't want to have a quorum situation. But possibly we could end up where you had alternates that maybe could attend instead on, at certain times. Or I don't know how we could work that out so we could have a little more input. I guess even at, at this point, I don't know if, I don't know, today's the day to do it. But we've heard a bit of history. And I know the ultimate decision lies with the board of county commissioners. But I'd kind of like to hear from some of our key players in, in our community, the judges and others that are utilizing this facility. Just, I don't know if they're prepared at this time to make any comments, but I think their comments are very valid. How we want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, because one thing I would emphasize, you said, of the fifty million for the, what I consider to be phase two of a two-part project, we've spent seven. But we also spent everything we've spent to get here. And in my perspective, this was a two-part unified project. I personally would have never voted to move administration into this building had it not been for the motivation of trying to create more capacity and security and et cetera for the courts. So if we need to pivot and we have the support of stakeholders, the courts and the, and the stakeholders there, then I'm willing to, my mind's open to that. But, but I am not going to, you know, spend whatever the final tally was here, plus seven more million, and then just stop, go, well, we don't really like it anymore. I can't do that because that would be leaving the courts high and dry. And that was not my intent when we started this whole thing. This was a, this was a coordinated, complete plan. And we're exactly, I'd say about halfway through that plan. So it's not just, in my mind, it's not just what we've done to the courthouse. You have to think of the whole atrium move as part of what we decided to do and where we would be pausing and leaving ourselves if we decided to pivot. But if the stakeholders are with us, then, you know, maybe there's other options that are better.
I, I haven't personally hold, I have not heard from the stakeholders that you're referring to, so that's kind of what I'm asking.
I have on, because I do one-on-ones with them. That's been the number one topic that I've spoken with.
Well, I mean, as far as right now, just in the last couple of weeks about putting a stop to it, let's relook at it because we know we can't do it right with fifty million. Is that, when I'm hearing that all the stakeholders are with us on that?
I don't know.
Oh, well, that's, I don't know either, that's why.
Well, I mean, we've had discussions, but it's.
Yeah, but I'd like to know where the stakeholders are.
I don't know, have the county manager, what else is planned for the next hour?
No, but I would say that I received a great phone call from Judge Skinder this morning. I believe he had a meeting with some of the judges. Judge Skinder, would you mind coming to the table and?
Can we get Judge Buckley up as well?
Absolutely.
I was going to say, I would defer to Judge Buckley just because he's been with this project for a long time, but yeah, I have.
Maybe it's like other folks and other prosecutors here too, but John, do you want to, it's on point.
I'm Brett Buckley, presiding judge Thurston County District Court. I've been at the court since nineteen something. You know, honestly, I, I think probably at this point, I would have said Commissioner Edwards has more experience in the courthouse than anybody in this room, but I think maybe that's not the case anymore. I might have.
You might have surpassed it.
Since we moved out, you've noticed up.
I was nipping at his heels before he left. And I do want to point out that when Rick was talking about the water escapade we had in building three, where I was sitting there talking to John Pettit. And John, do you remember the year?
My goodness, it was terrible, it was like.
Well, I was trying to, I actually have it on video. But I was talking to John Pettit in the lobby of building three, and then all of a sudden there was a drip, drip, drip. And it was not a rainy day, drip, drip, drip next to me. And I looked at the ceiling, I saw water coming down from one of these tiles on the ceiling. And then John and I are having a conversation, and so we move away a little bit. And within two minutes, the whole tile just collapses to the floor and water is just pouring down all over. So my first instinct is to go get Commissioner Edwards and have him come over and take a look at it. Look at what's going on here. Because we had already started the, the conversation about we really need a new courthouse. And this was probably in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, somewhere in that neighborhood this happened. So that's an example of what Rick was talking about, the facility we're in now. You know, we can knock down walls, we can increase space, but it doesn't do anything about that, not a thing. And when the power went out with that main system, the generator kicked on. But we had three courtrooms that had a lot of people in them. And we couldn't operate those courtrooms because they were dark. All we had were little emergency lights. So what we did was we, we went into the one courtroom where we actually have some natural light and we ran seventy-five feet of extension cord in violation of all the county rules to one outlet that was powered by the generator. And we use that to power our audio recordings of the proceedings. So we could actually conduct court and we put everybody from three courtrooms into one courtroom. And we had to conduct court that way with no nat, with only natural light, no other light. And then the computer being run by this extension cord that went seventy-five feet. So that's the nature of what we are facing. And it, at that point, as I said, we were already involved in this, this discussion about a new courthouse. And it really drove for me the point home that we're just, this is an inevitability. It's not, you know, is this a good idea to do and should we do it? You know, it's, we will have to do it. It's the question of, are we going to do it now? Are we going to recognize that this is important enough for us to say, okay, well, we're going to bite the bullet on this one? And, you know, since I've been involved in this from the beginning, you know, Judge Murphy and I were out for years talking to groups, just saying we really need a new courthouse. And we had no authority from the, from the county to do anything, to negotiate anything. We were just. We were just trying to build, um, an interest in the need for this. Anyway, as I look back, there were two primary mistakes that were made in nineteen, it was probably seventy-five or seventy-six when the building opens in seventy-eight. They faced this sort of same discussion because the courthouse they were in was too small. And the county was growing faster than they could supply the services and space for that. So they looked for two things, cheap site. They found it outside of downtown. They put, you know, up on the hill where we are now. Land was cheap up there. Okay, cheap site. And then they did cheap construction, you know, Rick really laid that out for us. And construction was meant to last twenty-five to thirty-five years. We are now forty-five years as Commissioner Fournier reports out in on that. And, you know, it, it, it let that board off the hook. They got cheap site, cheap construction. They had a new courthouse and.
Well, they did all get unelected though eventually.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, right after.
They did. But, you know, it now falls on the shoulders of the five of you, the decision that was made then. And so I would just urge, as you think about this, you know, remember that and you don't wanna put this same burden on commissioners down the road. You know, if we make the same mistake, if we repeat, repeat that approach. So I, I'll now answer Commissioner Edwards' question directly. In my conversations with Leonard, with Commissioner Fournier and with others, when the idea came back up that, okay, maybe we can have a serious conversation about a new courthouse, on behalf of District Court, I'll say we are willing to forego the renovations if the county is gonna make a full-on commitment to, um, pursuing a new courthouse. And I don't say this lightly because the space needs study that was done in twenty sixteen showed that of all the county functions, District Court had by far the least amount of space needed to its operations. We were less than fifty percent in that space needs study, the space that we needed to conduct our daily operations. And we've been living with that this whole time. And to continue living with it is a huge sacrifice, but it's one we're willing to make if the county goes full on board towards a new courthouse. And I really appreciate Commissioner's, Mensor's comments about the fact that he felt, uh, we all made a commitment to improve the spaces and I really do appreciate that. And that was important to us. But in my heart, I thought, okay, that's great, but we're gonna be in this building way longer. And, you know, there's just no, if we renovate it, there's not gonna be the will to say, okay, let's do a new building. We're gonna be stuck in a renovated facility for another twenty years. And I'm gonna be gone long before any new facility comes up regardless by now. So there's no hope of me working in a new facility. So I'm just telling you, on behalf of people who are gonna work in the courthouse, who are gonna come to the courthouse for its services, we need a new facility and renovating it isn't gonna get us where we need to be. So Thurston County District Court is willing to say, let's go full on board towards a new courthouse.
Judge Skinder?
Thank you for having me here today. You know, I have not had the history that Judge Buckley's had with this project. I became the presiding judge in Superior Court, uh, in January of this year. And, you know, but I wanted to put a little bit of this in perspective, so if you'll humor me. When this building, uh, our main courthouse building, buildings one, two, and three went into use, that was June of nineteen seventy-eight. Forty-six years ago. And we heard from Rick twenty-five to thirty years what this building was intended to do. It's far exceeded its lifespan. I came to the county and I worked as a deputy prosecutor starting in two thousand. At that time, everyone knew the building was aging poorly. And so the court is, tried to be a really good stakeholder and a really good partner. The board, in my view, and you all have a really difficult decision. I don't think this is easy by any stretch. There have been plans that the board has had to try to address this problem, knowing it's coming, knowing there's this huge cost, trying to figure out how to fund it. And what I would say is this, we continually try to work with the board. Every plan that comes out, the court tries to be a good partner and tries to help and, and participate. The design team has been, in my view, phenomenal, but recognizing that there were limitations to what they could do with the building. There were lots of times when we would sit in these meetings and we'd say, well, what about this? Could you do this? And they'd say, that makes a lot of sense, but we can't do it. Here's why. So we get to this point of the difficulty of saying, do we do a short-term plan that gets us another seven to ten years? That gives us space which not only the court needs, but the stakeholders need, but it doesn't really fix the problem? Do we do nothing? Do we just dedicate all efforts, the board dedicates all efforts to the new facility? How, how do we, how do we do all that? And where I come out on this is, you know, I, I think about it and the thing that I worry about is this building, could, any of these buildings could fail at any point. I was in the work on Saturday, the, um, there had been people coming in to do construction and they had had some panels, um, that they had gone in up into the ceiling. Everything seemed okay except for that. I come in, uh, this morning early and, um, there's a pipe leaking. It's caused a panel to come out. I let, let her know right away. And so my worry is, what happens when something fails? And the county doesn't have a choice anymore. And the board doesn't have a choice anymore. We've gone beyond a choice. We are stuck in a position where we can't continue to have court. I remember when Judge Buckley talked about power outages. I remember I was in a, a sentencing on a vehicular assault. And we were in courtroom two oh four, which has some lighting and we brought in lights. And we had a courtroom full of people and we continued on. We were able to get backup generator to cover the recording system. I worry about what happens when the buildings just fail and there's no plan. So again, I guess what I would tell you from Superior Court standpoint is we need help. We've come to the board. Judge Murphy's here. Judge Wilson's on, um, Zoom. The three of us have been really trying to, um, like I said, really be good stakeholders. Judge Wilson's in trial since she had a break. She was able to watch on Zoom. She's got ballot titles this afternoon. Judge Murphy is here and I know she has a lot of that historical perspective. But I think the key, from what I heard with Judge Buckley, is sort of where, where I'm at at this point. If the number one priority for the county is to address the fact that we need a new courthouse, uh, project and that is the entire, like, it has to be a hundred percent, then I think we're willing to listen to that. But, but if, but if it's not, then we need help. And I think that's, that's the difficult position that the board's in, is that there's the short-term fix that doesn't get us everywhere we need to get. We need, we need a long-term fix. We're at forty-six years on a building that was designed for twenty-five to thirty years.
Sure. I might just point out, but I think I'm gonna have to ask Robin, but I think it was in eighteen, the board went to the legislature and got a funding mechanism changed. And it went, I think, from the ability to, we had to do something in nine years and I think we got them to change it to twenty-five, I think. So we have made some progress that's still kinda waiting in the wings to be utilized, but we need to convince the voters that we're doing the right thing and get them to support us. But, but that was quite a, uh, success, I thought, at the time.
I thought the board has done tremendous work to, to, to advocate for the courts, but there are still, I think, a lot of people that don't know how bad the courthouse is. And, you know, Leonard was, he came over last week. He was able to go through, walk through both as a member of the public and as a member of staff and go into all the areas. And I don't wanna speak for him, but, but, um, the, the building is aging badly.
I, I wanna say that I think it hampered our efforts in twenty nineteen, that two of the, only two of the three commissioners were in support and I'm not gonna be comfortable when we say an all-out effort. I think we need a plan that all five commissioners are behind. Because if we, as the ultimate insiders, knowing, can't even agree amongst ourselves that this is, it sends a wrong message to the public. So I'm just looking at my seatmates, like, if we're pivoting to something like this, we have to all be together for me to wanna be part of, of this kind of a pivot. I don't know what that'll take, but.
We need to build that foundation, I think. And we've got a pretty good plan, maybe to do a, a committee assignment thing.
I, I, I appreciate everything you guys are saying and I'm, 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 I'm in, I'm, I'm in the same whatever corner or like, I'm, I'm where you guys are. I, I believe it.
Same tile?
Yeah, yeah. I hate ceiling tiles. Even when they're done right, I hate them, but like, this is, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I agree that this needs to be an absolute concerted effort that everybody in this room is on. And this, this is a huge, heavy lift and this needs to be the county's number one priority. And, you know, that, that, it's, it's that simple. So like, we all have to be in agreement and this, this has to happen. It, I don't know what the timeline would look like, but it's not gonna be an immediate thing. So I appreciate you saying that we're, we're willing to make sacrifices for the greater good, for a longer-term solution. I, I couldn't see it as a November ballot measure. And I, and I feel like, you know, any big ask, we really don't have like the political capital. This county doesn't have like the, like the pub, the, the amount of public trust needed right now. But I think we're at a great place to be building that. I think we have a great county manager. We have a new board. Uh, so like, this is, it's scary, but like, this is, to, in my mind, the right time to do this and figure this out. But we, we can't have other, like, like the next thing we're talking about this afternoon. To me, like, talking about rechartering the county is a complete distraction from the major effort that we need to be focused on. And so like, I want, I wanna go all in. I wanna make the big, you know, change that we need to make and like, you know, plan for the future. But we all need to be on the same page and I think that we can't have distractions outside of fixing our capital needs that are like thirty years ago needed to be fixed. So like, you know, there's a decision, there's another decision point coming up where I, I'm like, I, I'm going to be like, all right, no, no, no. Remember what we talked about this morning? That's our most important thing. So, but I, you've gotta have an assurance from us that we're on board. We've gotta have insurances from you that you're on board and I, I'm like, my, my palms are sweating. This is a scary, like, decision.
County manager?
Linda Anlo, our county clerk, wasn't able to be here today because she had a conference in Pullman, but she called. We talked on the phone and she, um, wanted me to relay, um, that from her perspective, if the county, similar to what the judges are saying, if, if the county was going to move forward with a, a new courthouse, that she would be willing to forego the renovations. That's how strongly she feels that the needs are bigger than just in the remodel. And so I wanted to relay that, as she asked me to, um, if I, if I had time in the future.
Would I be able to, um, do you have questions for the judges? Cuz I was hoping to maybe bring up prosecutor and public defense as additional stakeholders and have.
And we have control services on too.
Yeah, whoever's here that's one of the stakeholders. Sorry, Carrie, you were too far behind me. We could bring you guys up, just hear those folks perspectives. Thank you, judges. Give each of you a floor to just kinda, you've heard the discussion, you just kinda give us your perspective.
Okay.
Put it, put yourself in our shoes if, if you could, put you on the spot like that. Start with you, prosecuting attorney.
All right. Well, uh, to be honest with you, I'm kinda processing everything I've heard today as well. And I've actually been involved in these projects for, well, since the two thousand and four, uh, project, actually. I was involved in the planning of that project. Um, we went out to the voters with a hundred million dollar proposal that was, um, soundly rejected by my memory. And so, uh, during the last planning of the, of the courthouse, um, process from, it's about fifteen through, start about two thousand fifteen, sixteen, through the time when we were basically ready to go into the, to the ballot. And I will say that when we were getting ready to go to the ballot, prior to pandemic, uh, I was actually feeling fairly optimistic about our ability to get, um, community support for that project. And I'd been out, whereas, as, uh, other people, I think, at the table were out, talking about it to the community and really helping them try to understand the, the dire need that we had at that time. And then, of course, the, the floor fell out from under us. I have a lot of mixed feelings about this and so I'm just gonna share this with you. One is, as I understood it, you know, once pandemic came in, we were basically all dressed up and nowhere to go in terms of a, a new courthouse. So there was a pivot done at that time and it was ba, it was openly referred to as Plan B. And the idea was to try to, was believed that it would take about ten years to recuperate, um, not only to get through the pandemic, but then to recuperate and kind of rebuild a new vision and rebuild community support for a new vision, uh, which thus led, leads to a ten-year lease in this building, which is, uh, why the, why that was created. And then the idea was to do some sort of renovation that it gets us ten years down the road. So that we had ten years, basically, to put some kind of vision to get the community rallied behind for what's going to be probably the biggest, not probably, it, it will be, I think, the biggest, um, investment that we've ever asked the community to make in the county, um, county facility. It's, so what's troubling me is the, is pivoting away from that because I, while I am inclined to wanna grab onto some of the excitement I've heard about, let's just go for the new courthouse. Let's get right back into that thing and go for it, uh, which I would be all on board for, no question about it, a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent. I'm a realist to know that even to put together a vision for the community and get to a place where we're comfortable at the, at a point, asking the community to support the project is, in my view, at least, at least a year or two down the road, if, uh, maybe longer because we've gotta start again with new property, uh, identification, location, selection, design, all of that, that we went through. Took us three years, two or three years the last time to do it. So by that time, we're down to twenty twenty-seven, or less, uh, to even think about that. And then, uh, even if we get, and then if the community were, in fact, agreed to, to support us, make the investment of that, you got construction time, the ten-year timeline looks about right. So here's my biggest concern. Can we go another ten years in those buildings without any, without any, anything? I, you know, whether we go with the full fifty million that's planned right now or just anything, and I'm really skeptical that we can. The buildings are literally falling apart. And it also makes very little sense to me to sit there with building one, uh, empty, right? Where we're all crowded into building two and three, um, uh, cuz I have no space for any growth whatsoever, uh, unless I start doubling up people. And, uh, I only have half my, my criminal, my Superior Court lawyers are on site there. The other half are out in other sites. So I, my inclination is, just to get to the bottom line, I think, yes, we gotta start working on a new courthouse. We gotta work on a vision for that. We gotta start talking to the community about it. We gotta rebuild this conversation with the community, but we gotta anticipate that it's gonna take a couple of years at least to, to get to that point where I think we could actually make the ask to the community, uh, for their support. In the meantime, we gotta figure out a way to, to get another, you know, six, seven, eight, nine, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years out of that building. So that it makes sense that the atrium lease expires, the courthouse has reached its end of life. We all, um, are, are ready to go into a new facility. So I, I don't know what the plan could look like, but what I would support is something that gives us at least some sense of relief in the, in the courthouse, uh, facility. Uh, space wise or whatever, and you know, maybe some basic facial, uh, uplifting and repairs. Something that gives us some sense of relief to get the 10 years out of that. And then we go into a new courthouse conversation like we've never had done before. Uh, not just us, but with the community and look at, uh, asking them for their support. I'd say in, you know, 20, I think 25 is too quick, probably 27. I don't think you want to put on an even year, but. All right. So that's, that's what I have. Sorry.
And I'm, I'm pretty closely aligned with what you said there.
Yeah. And I'm kind of, I kind of wanted to explain like how we got here because it was by my request, right? I was like, we need to start talking about the long term because where my concern is, and hearing everything you're saying prosecutor and, and agreeing, right? And, and part with you, where my concern is, is we expend the $50 million, right? And that to just, not someone who's involved in government, but just the average person who's outside, $50 million just for space needs is a whole lot of money. And then for the county to come back out, right? And say, can you now vote on approving, you know, for 300? Or, you know, now we're hearing that there's a 35% interest. We don't, we don't know those figures yet, but can you approve even more? That for me was my concern, right? Where I was like, we actually need to start talking about the long term courthouse sooner. And I want to have this conversation now before we actually move into the construction phase of these buildings. Because how are we going to go out to the voters and say, we expended $50 million and now we're asking you for more money for new buildings? It just, for me, it seemed dead in the water on arrival. It doesn't matter how much we try and go out and tell the story. What they're going to be looking at is the use of $50 million that, you know, were used and nothing was really done besides create space. Uh, but we are still hanging on a thread with shoddy roofs, with an HVAC system that's limping along. And it's due to go kaput any, any day now. Uh, hopefully it lasts a couple more years, but you know, I'm not holding my breath. And a lot of infrastructural changes that we're not really investing in. We really are just investing in the space needs, not in the actual infrastructure of those buildings that are really falling apart on us. But understanding that it's like, well, how long, how much longer are we going to be staying in those buildings? Because we don't have the space now and those buildings are already falling on top of us. So I just wanted to explain kind of how we got to this point today because it was mostly from my concerns of that next step.
I, I hear you and I actually, I don't disagree with you. And this, what I was, I think what I would like to see the conversation go is, is there at least something minimum that we can do to, uh, utilize the space that we have now? Get, we got building one back online with something, open up some space, but maybe not make the entire $50, $50 million investment. Uh, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know their business well enough to know if that's even feasible. But it seems to me like if we could piece it out a little bit, maybe we could, um, figure out a plan to get there.
Public defense.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Uh, I, I echo what John said. I mean, this was the plan to Commissioner Minster's point. I mean, what your face was, was the plan. Should we not be successful on the ballot? And I think my biggest fear is, um, no renovation and no ballot measure pass. Nobody wants that. But is that a possibility? Of course. I'm going to really urge you to consider the renovation project, even smaller scale. Because that was the plan. I think we should stick with the plan and employees need this. Okay? I mean, our employees are expecting renovations. It's going to be pretty tough for us to tell our employees they're not coming and we're going in on a ballot measure. They'll be excited about that, of course, but at the same time, that's a, you know, I'll turn to the experts down here. A three, four year build. I mean, we're, if we look at a timeline of, to John's point, putting together a strong ballot measure, it's successful, which we don't know. Then what's the timeline to a build? It might be six, seven years with a lot of conditions precedent to getting a new building. And that's six or seven years for staff that are working in those buildings right now. We're going to continue to lose people. So it didn't help your decision, I'm sure. But at the same time, I don't think we're throwing good money after bad. I, I mean, I do appreciate that statement. But at the same time, the reality is I think we need some improvements to these buildings and go forward with a collective new push, um, to get a new courthouse. And maybe it's a public, private partnership. Maybe it's some of these other financing concepts that we talked about previously. But those, unless you went and, and did the work on that project, um, for the measure, that was at least 18 months worth of work to get there. So my final comments, I, I would urge you to push the renovation project forward in some scale to give us some relief.
Thank you. Carrie.
Thank you. Um, so I think John and Pat said it really well. I, yes, we need a long-term plan. I think we all see lots and lots of reasons we need a full new courthouse and getting there lasting six, eight, 10 years until we hopefully get there. We are falling apart, patching things together. I think we have, you know, all of our offices and departments have immediate space needs. I do not have space for all my staff. We have immediate programmatic needs. We have immediate safety needs. If we don't move forward with some sort of renovation, I suspect all of us are going to line up to come back and say, hey, by the way, we have this, oh, it's really small. We have this immediate space need. Just mine. Can you help me with just mine? Can you help me with just this programmatic need? So I think in addition to the long-term plan, there needs to be some sort of short-term plan. I would agree with the prosecutor having empty building one. While some of us don't have space for staff, having, building four is not vacant, but it's, uh, you know, my team is in a small portion of building four and lots of vacant space in there that a lot of us could put to use to have space for our staff. So I think the plan was always that we needed a long-term plan, but that we need a short-term Band-Aid in order to get there.
My, like, we, yes, everybody's, what everybody's saying is correct. Like I, I mean, like, but I, I get, I have fear that when the short-term plan is a $50 million price tag with a 30-year payback, the short-term can't plan will very easily become the long-term plan. So you do that 50 million and you're going to have exhausted public, you're going to have exhausted people and they're going to want to sit back and be like, okay, well, we accomplished something. And then that something becomes what we live in for the next 25 years. And that can't happen. But I like, I, I worry that that's what would happen. So like, I want a long-term plan and like, you know, and it, as much as it sucks, you don't fix something once it's already fixed a little bit, you know?
I, I share your fear. I mean, this is not a great spot to be in. I have fear that yes, it, once the $50 million is spent.
Yeah, we plant a flag in it and we're like, cool.
Right, yes. And I have fear of no, no renovation, no successful ballot measure and that we are where we are indefinitely onto Plan C, D, E, or F, which are probably all worse than A, B.
So something I'm hearing from you guys versus, I guess, the assumption in what you and Commissioner here are saying is that somehow the bond measure and the renovations prejudices our ability to get public support later. And I guess, and you may be right, but I mean, that's not, let me finish, let me finish my thought. I mean, the, the idea was we scaled this plan to what could be afforded with no tax increase within our financial means. With the thought being that wouldn't exhaust the public, that wouldn't tax the public. We're not asking them for anything. Uh, I mean, they're going to see in the newspaper, we're spending the money. But the idea was that's completely different than going to a voter initiative and asking them to pay more taxes, $12 a month on a typical house. That would be very, 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 very different. You guys are saying, well, maybe it wouldn't be that different because they're still going to be saying you're spending taxpayer money. So that's kind of a, a disconnect in this discussion because the whole point of, of the Plan B was what could we do without having to ask the voters for anything? Just using the financial tools at the county's disposal based on our high bond rating, very low debt ratio. Um, you know, what we, what, what we could afford within our means so as not to exhaust the public for a later ask on a ballot measure where they would have to pay more taxes. That's the reality of what we're going to be asking them to do if we're going, ever going to have a new courthouse. So anyway, I just want to throw that out there because it, because I wasn't really seeing it the way you guys were seeing it in terms of the connection between the two. Commissioner Edwards.
I guess, being as I am, the oldest, I get to keep going back in history. And John brought that out, but in 2004, it went down in flames pretty bad. But the need was still there. The commissioners went out and they built a jail. And then we had a recession during that process. And that jail sat there empty for, uh, several years because it never got finished actually for a few years into it. So it, it's sitting there empty for like six years deteriorating without ever being used. So my biggest fear continues to be, and, and it was when we were talking about Plum Street, that if we didn't have it right, and if we go to the voters and ask for that vote, that support, and it fails, boy, then you're in a tough situation because you just can't go back out the next year and say, you know, let's do it again, let's do it again, let's do it again. It doesn't work that way. And we need to get it right, you know? So, uh, kind of a hybrid about being what, you know, what's being discussed here, I think, could work. We're, we're going to have to patch up some things, but, uh, in the meantime, we better get it right. So we have a plan that's a hell of a lot better than a concept. Cause I don't think the voters like concepts myself that we're going to think about what we do. So, I mean, we got a lot of work to do to, to get to that point.
You brought that up a few times and I'm just wondering what, what more would you think is a plan versus what we did? Cause I thought what we did with all the binders, all the studies, the drawings, the conceptualization, the 16 open houses, the, I mean, I don't know what more, I don't know what more could be done. You keep saying that it was half baked and we needed a more specific plan to get voter trust.
Okay, well, I guess.
I like to know how that looks like to you.
I have to say about that, I'm not, I mean, obviously I was the, throwing cold water on the situation. I was the one holdout, if you will. And that was because I was hearing from the constituents that I was talking to, which in talking to Hutch afterwards, I realized that, hey, the support's not there. The Rotary Club is not there. The Chamber of Commerce is not there, you know? So it was not going to pass. We were kind of lucky that COVID came along and gave us the ability to bail out before we had a failure, I believe. So.
I agree with you, which is why I was wanting to pivot to Plan B.
I mean, so now I think we've got an opportunity to get it right. I don't think we had it right. We, the past county commissioners did something like what we did recently for this 15 million. They went out and just built the jail. The voters said no, but they said yes.
But what, I mean.
And we've done something similar right now on this remodel and we didn't give the voters the opportunity to voice their concern. I think we make a mistake anytime you go to a council mat, I mean, that's just my own personal opinion. We've got differences on that. But I just think that it causes problems. It's, it's, uh, Wayne mentioned trust. Trust is the biggest thing that we need to develop with our community, that we're going to do it right and then get a s- solid, uh, support through, through us and others, you know, that are users and stuff. So I just think we, we got a job on our hands to get it right.
Commissioner.
Can we go back to like the staff recommendations and moving forward with those? I know that, uh, time's running out, so I, I kind of want to, because I think a lot of these conversations, right? And the conversations are going to take place after there's, you know, we come back with, you know, after this committee works on it, a lot of these heavier conversations and support of the board. And all of this is going to take place after that, once we actually have something that's a little bit more tangible rather than just talking about what ifs or, uh, kind of rehashing a lot of, you know, we're, we're not going to get anywhere here today if, if we just keep going back to that. And so I think that moving forward with the committee, uh, and then having that conversation with the board on the direction that we're going to go, whether it's, we're going to be moving along with the $50 million project or we're going to be moving in another direction. Um, I think that needs to happen after these 30 days that the committee meets.
And so is there consensus to follow this recommendation? See, Commissioner Klaus nodding?
Yeah, I, I think so, but I want to get the foundation squared away before we start moving forward. And to me, the foundation, right off the bat, the first thing I've been asking for it for years was an Attorney General opinion. That's still up in the air. And I think we need to get an answer to that and put in for it soon.
Okay. Aside from that topic, would you like to serve, serve on this committee, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I'd do an alternate, I mean, I would, but you know, this thing's going to go on for quite a while. Uh, I've kind of put my notice in that I'm checking out here before too long, you know? So I would like to have those that are going to be here for a while, uh, take the main stage, if you will.
Commissioner Klaus, are you okay to be appointed? Did you have a desire to serve on this?
Yeah, I did. I was actually really interested in serving on the subcommittee, but I had questions about the time commitment. I'll be out of town for six days during the recess.
Okay. I'll look at the county manager. Um, what, what's the idea? I mean, how, how many often meetings and?
I think we would have, uh, meeting a week, four meetings, uh, to, so we would say four meetings, uh, for time commitment, hour each meeting, allow, obviously staff will be doing work, bringing stuff to the commission and bringing the stakeholders together.
I would imagine that as six days within we'd be, uh, you could work around Commissioner Klaus's schedule. She wanted to be part of it.
Maybe just a quick question about trust and developing trust. Are those committee meetings going to be, I don't know, open to the public, live streamed, whatever? I mean, I, I think it's pretty crucial that we be as transparent as possible as we move forward. So I know, I know one of the things worried about is the quorum thing, so.
I don't know, but it couldn't be three, but there was an alternate idea that was floated out by Commissioner Edwards. And I'm, I don't have any plans during the recess.
I don't either. I'm pretty open.
Would you be open to being an alternate, Commissioner Klaus? We just, we roll that way?
I wouldn't be, uh, opposed to it, but I would prefer to be a primary subcommittee member, which we discussed earlier today. So.
We need to put it up to a vote.
Is there a, um, i- 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 is the only, if three commissioners were on it, is the consequence then we have to notice the meetings, which is what Commissioner Edwards wants? So why don't we just have them, all three of them do it and notice some other meetings?
Well, the part of.
I'd rather have you all working on it if you're willing. I'm just not able.
Part of it is also bringing in the, the stakeholders, right? And bringing in, like, there's going to be just a lot of conversations that are going to take place. And those, and I'm not sure, like, some of them are probably going to be.
They don't have to be livestreamed. People can attend, per se. I don't know. That's just a thought.
No, it's not that thought.
Yeah. I will say, like, I agree with what I'm, what I've heard when numerous people have said, like, we need to be all in if we're going to do this. And I'm, I'm really interested in devoting a lot of time to this. I actually, when I spoke last week with the county manager, um, that we, you know, to kind of prep for the briefing today, looking at the briefing, you know, I knew there was going to be a request or a recommendation to do a 30 day pause. And my immediate reaction to that was like, okay, great. This gives me time to go out and talk to all the stakeholders and walk through the spaces with them and see it through their lens. And that was kind of immediately where my head went. So that was something I was planning on doing by myself anyways, before really thinking or realizing what we would be discussing today as far as the subcommittee goes. So, um, you know, I really am interested in this. It's something that's like right up my alley. As far as my concerns with just public safety and the whole system in general. And I've had conversations with stakeholders about this already, so. And I've had conversations with stakeholders about this already, so I'd be really interested in being a primary on that subcommittee.
Okay. Well, I guess, I'm dis, I, I personally disinclined to have Commissioner Mihia not on it, because she's been here, she worked in the courts, and she's been here the longest between the, so to have one, and then having a brand-new perspective is great. So it's either Commissioner Mihia with two, and then their meetings, or you with, and then we'd have to.
We wrestle again?
Or you'd have Emily and Wayne, we wrestle. Or pick the, pick numbers, you know?
Fresh off cancer, you might have a chance.
We could agree to just have them draw a number for it if we want to keep it at two, I'd rather just make it random. I don't have, I don't think there's a, a strong argument that one of you is better than the other for the committee, so I'd have, I'd say just make it a random draw, if we can't, unless we're going to go to three of you.
Or we, yeah, we go to three and we assign it as a special meeting and notice as such, and.
Commissioner Mihia, you're afraid.
That's an easy way to do it.
Are you afraid, you're, you're, you think the discussions might be inhibited by, or something?
I would hope not, right, but it does put a different element to it, and, but I'm willing to.
But don't all of them, the, whether it's a quorum or not, they're all going to be open to the public, whether or not livestreamed.
It wouldn't have to be.
Oh, they wouldn't have to be?
If we do notice it, and we do say it's a three-person subcommittee, then it, and if Commissioner Edwards is in, he could pop in and sit in on it without.
Right.
Causing some type of violation.
You could be there for a couple of them, if you were interested in contributing, I'd like to have your contributions.
So that might be the better alternative.
Because I think all five of us have to be in agreement on it.
You've got value or perspective, if you're not.
I can zoom in for someone at some point if I can, anyway.
I don't think your wife will appreciate this.
We'll see. So is there support then for having a subcommittee?
I guess I, I would like to have more discussion about this, you know, I mean, we don't have to do it today, obviously, but.
That allows, if we make it a three-person subcommittee and we notice it, that allows you to have more discussion about it as that subcommittee meets.
Right, but I think we need to get some sense of where we're at. I'm obviously, I'm, I'm like a hundred percent about open government, and I want the public to be able to be, if they were, if they're interested, I want them to be able to view us.
And by making it a three-person special meeting, you're doing that.
Well, yes, except the livestream part of it.
Well, that's a different, that's a different.
And the livestream part of it is, what do you do? Do you have people, I'm, I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw something out here. We've, we've have people in the community that feel very strongly about this. So what, they're going to come in and run a tape recorder or a video recorder at our meetings that are open to the public, and then just put out what they want to have out there? Versus if we've got it truly livestreamed and it's an open public meeting? How, how do other jurisdictions do this? Like, when Olympia has committee meetings, are they all secret?
None, none of these are secret, that's not a nice word to use, that's, that's.
I know, but it's.
They're not livestreamed, though, none of the.
None of them are livestreamed?
Yeah, I, and I don't know, this is such a big topic for the county. I, I don't know, it's a, this is the biggest topic we've ever had.
Why don't we just defer the decision to this afternoon, so we can all, we've all heard a lot this morning.
Okay.
I think we do need to decide on the staff recommendation, because we're about to go to a board recess tomorrow.
A lot of times, that subcommittee would decide, right? You assign the subcommittee, and then one of the first things the subcommittee does, well, they assign a chair, well, okay, do we feel this needs to be livestreamed or not, like, that's.
Okay.
Leave it, leave it.
Leave it up to them?
I would say, yeah.
Is that okay, we'll take this up this afternoon, Commissioners check in, so we can all think about it for a couple of hours.
Sure.
And so we'll leave this topic for this meeting, and eleven fifty-two, anything else anybody needs to address before we, we'll have to check in this afternoon for other items, so.
Thank you, guys, for all coming.
Yes, thank you very much, we're adjourned.